Order the City of Norco City Council regular meeting agenda for Wednesday, June 5th. If the city clerk will please call the roll.
Councilmember Newton.
Here.
Councilmember Hoffman.
Here.
Councilmember Bash.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Hanna.
Yes.
Mayor Grunmeier.
Yes.
All present.
Thank you. So the city council will recess to closed session to consider the items on the agenda. At this time, I would like to go ahead and reconvene our public session. It's 7:03. The city attorney will go ahead and give a report of actions taken in closed session.
Yes, the city council discussed the matters listed on the agenda in closed session excluding the performance evaluation of the city manager which has been continued to the next meeting, and there's no reportable action.
All right. At this time, I'm going to ask you to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and stay standing for our invocation. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
At this time, it's my pleasure to introduce to you Pastor Aaron Deans.
Oh, all right. If you would join me in prayer. Dear Lord, I just want to thank you for this day, God. We thank you that we can be here, Lord Jesus, coming together and working for the good of those that live and work in Norco, Father. Lord, I pray for the wisdom and the advice, Lord, to just be utilized to take us into this next season of prosperity and just vitality for this city, God. I thank you for the council members, their families, and all the residents and businesses of Norco. In your name we pray, amen.
So at this time, our city manager is going to go ahead and introduce our new city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the city council. Before I introduce the new city clerk, I'd like to remind you that today is Cheryl's last day. Cheryl Link is our current city clerk, and this will be her last day of employment with the city of Norco. As you know, Cheryl has been serving as the city clerk over the last five years. She previously worked for the city as deputy city clerk and held other positions here in the city of Norco. Cheryl, I see her as a strong leader who has served the city with dedication and excellence, and we will certainly miss her contributions to the city. I do want to wish her well and her family. And with that, our new city clerk, Dana Roa, will be taking over from Cheryl. Dana was selected through a comprehensive selection process that included many applicants. Prior to coming to the city of Norco, Dana worked for the city of Riverside as deputy city clerk for 13 years. She is a certified municipal clerk, working on completing her bachelor's degree in public administration at the Cal Baptist University. During her tenure with the city of Riverside, she was described as a very strong leader who was well-liked and respected by all. She is patient, understanding, professional, and provides excellent customer service, both to internal and external customers. She was also described as honest, trustworthy, and can be relied upon to get the job done. I believe these are the essential qualities that Dana would need in order to be successful here in the city of Norco. So I am pleased to welcome Dana Roa as the city's new clerk, and I'm looking forward to working with her here in the city of Norco. Now, I want you to join me in welcoming her to the city of Norco. And with that, Dana, I don't know if you want to say a couple of things here?
Thank you, Andy. That was very nice. I just want to say thank you for choosing me. I'm very humbled and honored to be part of this city. I respect the culture here in Norco, the small-city feel that is here, but you're small but mighty. And that's what attracted me to Norco, and when I applied for the position, I know I have big shoes to fill. Cheryl has been amazing in extending her time here to help me. I look forward with working with everybody here in the city of Norco. They've been so patient and kind with the past two weeks with me getting up to speed. The council and the mayor has been amazing, and I just look forward to working with all of you. My door is always open. You have questions or concerns. I look forward to working with you all. Thank you.
Thank you, Dana, and welcome. All right. At this time, we are going to have a presentation from Riverside County Transportation Commission on Reboot My Commute with Erin Haake.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and honorable council members. It's my pleasure to be before you tonight. My name is Erin Haake. I'm the External Affairs Director for the Riverside County Transportation Commission, and my opening slide is a scene that everyone in Norco is likely familiar with at one time of the day or another. And what we're here to do tonight is to share with you an effort that RCTC has undertaken for the last 90 days to engage everyone in coming up with solutions to traffic and getting around and mobility and living our daily lives. So with that, I'd like to share with you a video that introduces Reboot My-
In 2001, a local firefighter called me distraught over head-on collisions occurring on Interstate 15 and 215. Drivers were accidentally crossing the median and colliding. People were dying, and we had to do something. At the time, Caltrans rules didn't allow us to add a barrier in that median. Defenders of the status quo said, "Do nothing," but common sense said, "Fix it." Lives were at stake, so we didn't wait, and voices from across the community, citizens and business groups, everyday commuters, parents concerned about their kids on the road, all joined together in calling for action. Together, we got that median barrier built. People are alive today because we acted. It's this sense of duty to improve the lives of our neighbors that inspire me and the people at the Riverside County Transportation Commission to go to work every morning. I share this with you because today we're at a critical turning point in Riverside County. Traffic, pollution, and population issues are stealing time with our families, affecting our health and connections to one another. The truth is, Washington DC and Sacramento won't solve these problems for us anymore, and it's impossible to build enough highways to solve every traffic jam. Technology is revolutionizing how we move and work like never before, and all of this means we need new solutions developed from the ground up. To solve our problems and build for the future, we need that same aggressiveness, cooperation, and problem-solving we use to get that median barrier built. We did it then, and we can all join together to do it again. Riverside County is no longer some small, faraway place. We're thriving, and we need a future free from congestion, with jobs closer to home and trips that are smooth, safe, and predictable. We need a future where we can travel safely and have more alternatives to driving. We need a future with more opportunities for young people, for disabled individuals, for our senior citizens, and for our veterans. We need a future that gets you home in time for dinner with your family. That future is ours if we work together now. So today, I am announcing our new public outreach campaign, Reboot My Commute. Reboot My Commute is an opportunity for us to share with you what we're working on and for you to share with us what you want us to do next. Go to rebootmycommute.org to see what actions we're taking to improve your life and to tell us what projects, services, and new ideas you want for our community. This exchange of information is critical to creating a plan built by us, for us, so we can secure our own future. Right now, go to rebootmycommute.org to sign up. Use the hashtag RebootMyCommute whenever you can and text RCTC to 55222 to receive text message updates from us on this important campaign. You have my personal commitment that RCTC will listen to you, communicate with you, share ideas with you, and work with you to create a fair and prosperous community for all of
So the challenge is real, and we're excited to solve it or work towards solving it with the help of the community and with the help of city councils such as yours all across the county. And that challenge will not get any lighter as the county around us continues to grow at a very fast rate. And so what we've done over the last 90 days is reach out to the community and listen. We've heard their frustration. We understand that people on the road, you know, have a hard time getting around, and we understand that the status quo is not sustainable. Many of the things on this slide were mentioned in Ann's video. And what we've accomplished in the last 90 days is pretty astonishing from our point of view. We've received over 1,000 comments from residents of Riverside County, and these comments have come in through rebootmycommute.org, which is still operative today, and I encourage residents of Norco. So you can pull it up on your phone right now, and you can log in and leave us a comment of what improvements you would like to see, whether it's on the freeway, on the bus, on a local interchange. And the comments we've received are very constructive, and actually, most of them would probably not be a surprise to most of the folks in this room. The video you just saw and others like it have received over 11 million impressions throughout the last 90 days, and 1.4 million people have watched the video in its entirety. So we're reaching a lot of folks. We did a telephone town hall last month. We did two, actually, one in the Coachella Valley and one out here where we actually dialed people in the evening, hopefully not during their dinnertime, but we had over 7, 7,500 people around the county dial in to listen and actually engage with us in a conversation about what they would like to see in their community. We've also got a text message campaign going. I'll put the number up again in a minute, but folks can actually text message with us their ideas as well, and we've been at community booths around the region. On this slide is a couple of examples of Norco comments that we've received, and this is the raw, unedited comments that we've received from a couple of residents. And you can see here, these are people who have real experiences every day, and they have good questions. They want to know why things are the way they are. Can they be improved? And they tell us where their pain points are. And so these are just two of the thousand comments we've received, and our commission, of which Commissioner Hannah, Council Mayor Protem Hanna, I should say, serves. The commission will receive all of these comments. They'll be able to see them raw. They'll be able to see them by topic, by community. What are the issues? And so there is still a few days left for residents of Norco and across the county to engage, and here's how you can do it. So you can go to rebootmycommute.org right now on your phone. You can also text RCTC to the number 55222, and that will actually also subscribe you to subsequent updates if we do more outreach like this. You can tag us in social media, and there's also a 24/7 hotline you can call if you would just like to verbally leave your comments there. You can dial that 1-800 number, and someone will answer the phone, and they will log exactly what you say and send it to us. We are at the tail end of this. This presentation is kind of our grand finale here tonight, but we will take comments, you know, for the next couple of weeks if they do come in, and we look forward to sharing that with the community. And ultimately, what this rolls into is the commission is going to be looking at our next 10-year delivery plan. What are our priorities for the next 10 years with the limited resources we have? And we want to use the community's input to inform what those priorities are going to be. So appreciate you having me here tonight.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? All right.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's an honor. Thank you.
Not of Aaron, but Andy, could we get this on our web? Kelly's shaking her head. Okay. Good job on the marathon, by the way.
All right. We're going to go ahead and move into our regular agenda at this time. So the first thing we have is our city council communications, reports on regional boards and commissions, and we will start with Mayor Protem Hanna.
Okay, I only have a couple of little short videos. One of them is from RCTC, the improvements on the 15 freeway express lanes. Did you get that to work this time?
The Riverside County Transportation Commission presents 15 facts on the 15 express lanes. This edition looks at the benefits of using precast concrete girders to build bridges. Construction of the 15 express lanes requires the widening of 11 bridges, including the 2,000-foot-long Santa Ana River Bridge. RCTC is using precast girders built off-site and transported to the project area to widen the bridges. Precast girders save time and money by eliminating the need to build temporary support structures beneath the bridges. Girders also help motorists by allowing continuous traffic flow under the bridges during construction. At the Santa Ana River Bridge, using precast girders reduces the effects to the environmentally sensitive river area below. The girders are made with reinforced steel rods. As the concrete dries, the steel rods are pulled tight to give the newly-formed girders greater strength to hold weight. The rods act like hands pressing against a stack of books. Without putting pressure on both ends, the books will fall. When squeezed tightly from both ends, the stack of books becomes stronger and can hold its weight and more. The widening of the Santa Ana River Bridge requires the girders to be laid end to end, each one resting on piers, walls that are built below to hold up the bridge. Each girder measures more than 170 feet long and weighs more than 110 tons. Special cranes are used to guide them into place. Crews deliver the girders at night to reduce the effect on motorists. The use of precast girders is another innovative solution used on the 15 express lanes project. Want to stay connected? Sign up on our website or by text for weekly construction updates.
This is a diagram of the cycle of how the West Nile virus is transmitted into a horse or a human. There you see it goes from the mosquito to the birds, the birds back to the mosquito, then the mosquito goes back to the horse or the human. So we know we're going to have lots of problems this year with the mosquitoes, so keep your extra water buckets, containers emptied, and I'd empty the other ones every other day just to get rid of the mosquito eggs in there. So we have that. My next report is this oral on RTA a couple of weeks ago, and you might have read it in the paper. Of course, a bus driver stopped his bus at the hospital down in Moreno Valley, and he went in to use the restroom. Well, they turned the buses off and locked the doors and everything, and some guy come out, tried the doors apart, managed to start the bus without the key, and he got a block and a half before they got him stopped. But all those buses have all types of security on there, cameras and whistles and bells and stuff like that, and I think he was going down the street, sounding off all the alarms because he started without the code, but that was just kind of a funny deal. Took all the precautions, but what can you say about the town it happened in? Thank you.
Councilman Hoffman.
I did a lot of things, but most of my agenda is basically with the, if you're looking there, my businesses or events I attended has to do with our youth in the city. I really want to thank going out to the T-ball thing on last Saturday. I tell you, what a fun, at the end of their season, you see these little kids, and what's nice is normally their parents are there. We have grandparents coaching these kids, residents of Norco that are taking the time to coach their grandchildren, and boys and girls, so it was kind of fun. Flipped on the other one, Matt and Will. What I really want to talk about is the, I really appreciate all my Veterans Committee members. Kevin, who did an MC pair during the deal, along with all the other commissioners and committee members of the Veterans Committee. And if you could bring on those pictures, I just want to share this. If you weren't there, that's 102-year-old Joe Dinuzio, World War II veteran, and I believe that's Ken standing next to him, Marine, Marine Corps. Joe participated in the European Theater in World War II. He's still alive, and he forgot to learn how to tie his ties, so we, Sergeant Spratley and I got him screwed away. So get the next one. Those are our blue, and the lady in the middle is a gold star mother. These are local ladies, live in the area. Really appreciate them coming out, and that's why we have Memorial Day, to remember that woman's son. Go ahead, next one. I know Dick Haley, Dick Haley, World War II Navy and Korea. Dick is not only that, but he's a minister here at one of our local churches. He has been a pleasure to work with over the years, and I know he's getting on, and I really appreciate my Veterans Committee and everybody else trying to help him get up there. He looks forward to everything we do up there. Go to the next one. I say we work with youth. That's the Norco High Madrigals singing. This is the first time they've been up there singing. Normally, we bring in Shante, but I thought that I got a lot of accolades and appreciation from the public that we involve the youth there, and these kids did a great job. Next one, please. And I say youth because that's our junior ROTC. Named after, the unit is the George Ingalls Junior ROTC Program. And these kids, Sergeant Spratley and Paul, I can't think of his last name, the Colonel, the major over there, they do an excellent job and really appreciate. Again, the comments we had is that we bring the youth, we teach them, this is their history, so they understand the Memorial Day and the importance of it. And I appreciate all the veterans that came out and everybody else that helped on this thing. We got compliments. This is one of the best ones we've had. So please remember, we don't have much more coming on except our next date, June 14th, is Flag Day. Please, you know, you have the concerts in the park on, starts this Saturday, Friday. Come the following Friday, we'll give you another free concert up at the memorial. They're going to have a choir up there. They're going to be singing a lot of patriotic songs. We'll do a little history of the flag, but this is your memorial, and please take the time to come on up there. If you don't get a chance to go on one of our events, just come on up there. It's open every day. Thank you.
Thank you.
So anyway, I went to all that stuff, but also, something I didn't put up there, I got to go to the softball championship game, which was amazing. I skipped out on the FFA. I'm sorry, Robin. I apologize, but I felt somebody just had to be there, and that was amazing. And then the next day, I went to Dodger Stadium and watched the Norco High Boys. 12 innings, they lost 1 to nothing. The single greatest catch I have personally ever seen, and I'm going to tell you right now, that kid who scored did not tag up. I don't care what anybody says, but everybody was watching. A Willie Mays catch out in right field, and it was absolutely amazing, and that guy was three feet off the bag, and he took off, so should have been caught. Move on, let's see. Then I went to WRCOG. I'm not sure what I listed there. Is that everything? I think that's everything. WRCOG, there's a whole bunch of things, and I sent council the list of some of the bills that are coming up. One of the things we did do is we dodged a bullet, two things. One, SB 50 is dead, and two, there's another bill that was going to tie, if you don't have enough high-density low-income housing, they would hold back your SB 1 road funds. They're not going to be doing that now. That would be kind of bad for us. I went to the STAR meeting today, and once again, Brian, Alejandra, and Michelle, the place was packed. The yoga teacher, it was handled like that. It was amazing. I texted Michelle, she wasn't there, and she says, "There's a lot of people here. Are you coming?" So that was pretty interesting. And then I'll discuss this a little bit later. We did receive a letter on a project that the Navy Base wants to do. I'm a little bit, no, truthfully, I'm offended. We do a lot for the Navy Base. We've never once tried to stop one of their projects. They want to do a building, and if they were just honest and say, "Look, we know this is historic. We know this is what it is, but we have to do this for our mission," we'd say, "Go for it." But they don't do that, and like I said, I will discuss that at length when we get to the historic part of that. Lastly, two other things, a letter from Supervisor Spiegel. I really appreciate the fact on the high transmission lines. I'm really glad she's done that. And then John, myself, and Andy have been working, and the truth of the matter is, this has been a council effort from the get-go, but we apparently are going to be going up and trying to lobby to have them underground those high transmission lines as they also come through Norco. I'm disappointed that CAL FIRE hasn't come up with a letter that we can use, but that letter is still useful because it does say that it is a high-propensity area. And that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
I didn't have anything that I told you about. Spoke at the rural meeting the other week, went to Robin's dinner for the kids, so that was good. But tomorrow, I have the Chino Disalter Authority Board meeting, and then I'll have a report in two weeks on that. So other than that, no report. Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, Kevin.
My apologies, everybody. The sheriff put on a fantastic event. I had such a great time. It was packed. I went back the next night, but one of the things that I was able to get was I had the author sign a book to Norco, and I don't know what we'll do with it, but I read it. But I'd like to give this to you, Madam Mayor, along with the program for that, maybe put it in our mayor's office. Then the other thing I went ahead and got was the history of the Riverside County Sheriff's Department, so I think this is pretty cool. Like I said, it was a really interesting, interesting event, and I thought it was very well-done, so please send my compliments to the mayor and his, to the sheriff and his staff. Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. And then I do not have a report for today, so we're going to move on to agenda item number two, which is city council consent items. All items listed under the consent calendar are considered to be routine in nature and may be enacted in one motion. Prior to the motion to consider any action by the council, any public comments on any of the consent items will be heard. There will be no separate action unless members of the council or audience request that specific items be removed from the consent calendar. Items removed from the consent calendar will be separately considered under item number three on the agenda. Are there any items that a council member wishes to be pulled? Any others? It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar with the exception of item H. Ask unanimously. All right. Thank you. So we're going to go ahead and move on to item number three, which is our items that were pulled from the consent calendar. Councilman Newton.
Thank you, Mayor. Chad, this is a question, a couple of questions for you on this. Notwithstanding that this is a notice of completion, I just want to make sure we have a few things covered and maybe the only leverage we have. On your dollar amounts, we issued this contract for 1.192 for the lift stations for both of them on Valley View and Corona, and then it says final contract amount was $1,003,010. On the base contract, city managers authorized 10% for change orders, so that figuring the 10%, that would have been 119,000, which would have been allowable up to 1,312,000 dollars within the 10%. So I'm going back to the additional $40,000 that you requested from council, that by these numbers, we never had to touch the $40,000, the way I'm reading this paragraph.
I'll have to verify this, unfortunately. We did, because at the time we came for that request, we had already determined we were to expend the 10% contingency, so the number should reflect that. I just got to make sure that the 1.192 is the, should be the contract amount, and the 10% should have been 119,000.
Right, so your base contract is 1,192,922. 10% of that is 119,292, which makes a total of 1,312,214, and you're saying you spent The 40,000 isn't in play.
It should have been in play. I'll have to recheck my numbers if you'd like. Go ahead and agenda this item for next council meeting. I come with the corrected numbers.
Okay. I mean-
Part of the request for additional funds used to pay Edison?
Correct.
Was there any, okay, so-
Well, that's what I was going to get to, that there was-
Yeah, that's true.
Part of the discussion with the 40,000 was for design errors and- Part of the discussion with the $40,000 was for design errors and field conditions. And then, so we had, I think we tried, you had said you were going to try to work it out with Edison where they were going to accept the fact that there was that undercover vault, et cetera.
Right.
And not pound us into the ground. But let me get to the gist of that. So, and correct me if I'm wrong, two months ago, we talked about the design errors by the engineer, and that was approximately $20,000? In design errors on this contract?
Potentially, yes.
Not, well, there's no potential anymore, the job's done. So, is that amount $20,000, or was it...
What I'm saying potentially is, that has not been determined whether it's a design error or not amongst the designer and the city, so I can't say it's a design error.
For the last two months, we haven't worked out anything with the engineer on how he's going to pay us, what he owes us on this project?
Myself and the city manager have worked with RKAA and determined overall what components of the project likely would, for the city's perspective, would be classified as a design error, but we have not gone officially, and they agreed to that as a design error versus what they would classify as unknown circumstances. But I guess the answer is, nothing's officially been determined how much they should pay, or offer in services and kind.
But the request for the $40,000 was for change in field conditions and design errors?
It was done because we, the issue was that the, the power for the plant was not included in the project. It was assumed it was already three-phase, and it was not. The question becomes whether or not, even if they had, if they had recognized at the time that three-phase power was not there, the city would have expended these funds on this work. And the question is, how much of that? You know, obviously, a change order is at the time you're at the general mercy of the contractor for his price that he comes up with at that time, versus going out and having somebody else do the work. So there's debate about whether that that price was reasonable, whether it was high, but the reality is, RKAA's discussion and argument is that, yes, they neglected and didn't realize that it was single-phase power there, and they needed three-phase, and that was an error on their part, but the work would have still been required, and the cost would have still been expended. The debate is now, is would have been 27, that there was the, was the change order, would have been 20 if it was in the bid, it could have been higher, you know, and so that's the discussion.
In the last two months, you have not established any magnitude of that error?
Correct.
Okay. Follow-up on that is then, have, are we still holding retention on this contractor?
Yes, we always hold retention on the contractor.
And I hate to do this to contractor, but, because he's completed all the work?
Right.
All right? And I hate to bang him on, my issue is between staff and the design engineer, because I'm not going to accept anything that says, "Oh, we'll work out a credit in the future with them." I'm not going to buy that. So my motion is to continue this item off calendar in filing the notice of completion till staff resolves the issue between the design errors and the design engineer.
Can I make additional comments on this, Madam Mayor? So, for the work that was done by the city engineer, our contract city engineer, actually, there has been a proposal submitted to resolve the cost associated with that error by the city engineer, and that, that proposal has not been finalized and has been, has not been agreed by the city engineer and staff, we will finalize that. I do, however, believe that is unrelated to the contractor who did the work and has completed the work, and filing of the notice of completion associated with that. Again, we have issue with the city attorney, I'm sorry, John, city engineer.
I have issues with him too, so that's okay.
City engineer that we are trying to finalize, and that is, again, a separate issue from the engineer who's done the work, and that has been determined to be complete and to the satisfaction of the...
Yeah, but my concern is, I understand it's a notice of completion, but if we were to sign this off, now we've given up all the leverage that we have, once again, and then it's, this has dragged down for over two months, you knew how to get it resolved, and it didn't happen.
My only comment would be that, remember that one of the things a notice completion does is starts the statute of limitations running, which is...
I know exactly what it does, John, but it's the last piece of leverage we have, so...
The leverage you have, the leverage has...
Not sitting here two more months going, "Yeah, we're still working it out."
Except, it sounds like the leverage that you have is that it's between the city and the contractor.
No, the leverage is going to be that this contractor's going to call Chad and go, "I want my damn retention," and it's going to force the staff to get this resolved.
I don't see the next...
So, I have a motion?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Please vote.
What was the motion?
The sub-completion. Off calendar.
Off calendar, correct.
Motion passes unanimously. At this time, we're going to continue on to Item Number Four, Public Comments. This is a time when persons in the audience wishing to address the city council regarding matters not on the agenda may speak. Please complete the speaker card in the back of the room and present it to the city clerk so that you may be recognized. The Ralph M. Brown Act limits the city council's ability to respond to comments on non-agendized matters at the time such comments are made. The city council shall not discuss or take action relative to any general public comment. We have one public comment card, Susan Olmstead Bowen.
Good evening, council and staff. I just wanted to give a report on the Measure R since I am the chair. I think that we got off to a really rough start. We have a bunch of people who never work together, who, some that don't understand fund accounting, and we were forced to make decisions before we were ready. And so everyone said, "Well, then we'll make our own decision," and they did. So also, this is a really bad year to have a million-dollar surplus instead of the deficit we were told we were going to have at the beginning of the year. And then we got Measure R, and now we're being asked for operating funds, and I asked to push those to mid-year, and we were told, "No, we had to make a decision before the budget," and I think that was incorrect. But Andy and I are working together to educate the committee, set us back on the correct path, and I appreciate his work and Gina's knowledge, but it was really a rough start, and I don't, and I don't think it was managed well. And I'm guilty of part of that also, so I just wanted to let you know how we're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. That's all the speakers. Okay, thank you. We will move on to Item Number Five, which is legislative matter. No new evidence will be heard from the public, as a public hearing has been closed regarding the items listed. So, Letter A is Ordinance 1051, a second reading. So is there a motion to approve? Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded to approve Ordinance 1051. Okay, motion passes unanimous. Thank you. We'll move on to Agenda Item Number Six, was a public hearing. The order for public hearings are staff report and presentation, council will then have their questions of staff, I will open up the public hearing, and we will hear speakers in favor, against, or neutral. We will close the public hearing and bring it back to the council for discussion and action. Our first item is a proposal by the Historic Preservation Commission to amend Norco Cultural Heritage Landmark Number One by expanding it to include all extant historic buildings and features, and so, Mr. Wilkman, you are up.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name is Bill Wilkman, I'm the city's cultural resources consultant, and today, I'm going to address the proposal to expand Landmark Number One, which encompasses a part of the Norconian property, to encompass its entire boundary of historic properties, which includes the balance of the resort, naval hospital, and its use as a guided missile laboratory. I know you've had a long day today, so I'm not going to present the staff report, instead I'm going to present a PowerPoint on this, and I hope I get this right. Is it the green stripe that I pressed? Which one do I press to advance? The arrow's been rubbed off of it, so, okay. I think we're all aware that the Norconian property began as a resort in 1929, this is what it looked like in those days, basically, all the resort elements, a golf course, a hotel, lake, pavilion corridor, chauffeur's quarters, and a garage laundry building. Okay, what happened? Am I pointing this in the right place? There we go, okay. There we go, okay. When the property was converted to a naval hospital in 1941, it was expanded considerably and included three hospital units, as you see on this, on this drawing, or this aerial photograph, and as you can see, there were quite a few additions to the property at that time. Landmark Number One at the present time only encompasses the area in red. The area in yellow is the current National Register listed part of the property, and it encompasses all of the resort-related improvements on the property that was approved in the year 2000. The area in white is the area to which we proposed to expand both Landmark Number One and also the National Register listing on the property. So why would we want to expand our historic listing? Well, first of all, our National Register nomination of the Norconians' property was unanimously approved by the State Historical Resources Commission on February 2nd, 2018. So there's a gap between what the State Historical Resources Commission approved and what we have on the books for our own Landmark One. However, before a final decision can be made on this nomination, the Navy must review and comment on it. The Navy has had our nomination for nearly a year and a half, with no promise of when it's reviewably complete. Expanding our local historic designation is something we can do now, and will establish secret protections for all, but the, all non-federal lands on the property. So what makes this property so important? Well, first of all, it's a rare surviving example of an early 20th century California resort. It's also a time capsule of World War II history. If you look at the image on the left and compare it with the image on the right, you'd almost think that the image on the right is just a colorized view of the black and white image on the left, but in fact, the one on the left shows what the property looked like during World War II, and the one on the right shows what it looks like now, there's an incredible level of integrity on the property. It's a rare surviving World War II naval hospital. Most naval hospitals during World War II were built with temporary construction, and you can see Naval Hospital Beaumont on this picture here. After World War II, these were typically demolished. It's a rare surviving example of a resort or hotel-based naval hospital. It's master architect designed, the resort was designed by Dwight Gibbs and G. Stanley Wilson, and the naval hospital was designed by Claude Bealman. All of these are highly regarded architects in our nation's history. It was established by the largest contingent of Mayo Clinic doctors ever assembled up to that time, and there were two contingents, you can see the first one on the left and the second one on the right. It was the Pacific Center Theater for the treatment of a number of medical conditions, tuberculosis and rheumatic fever were two of them, and there was also aspects of rehabilitation, which were also a part of the Pacific Theater Center for the treatment of these conditions. It is the sole surviving pioneer of wheelchair basketball. The Navy's leadership significantly reduced local races' practices in the area, this is really important. Many people don't realize this, but in the 20s and 30s, the Ku Klux Klan was very heavily established in the Corona-Norco area, and basically influenced governmental and business practices. When the Navy came along, they told the Corona-Norco businesses that if they didn't serve all their patients equally, they would consider those businesses off-limits, and as you can imagine, that very quickly integrated businesses that were otherwise segregated. There was extraordinary local involvement in the property. The upper-left image shows the Red Cross gray ladies, who were all volunteers from the Corona-Norco area to assist the medical staff on the, on the hospital. Upper-right shows the Navy mothers, these were heavily involved in supporting patients both emotionally, financially, and socially, and this, what this shows here in this image is a birthday cake, which is being enjoyed by some of the patients. They literally tracked every single patient's birthday and baked a cake for them on their birthday. So that was the Navy mothers. The Corona High School coronets was a group of high school females who basically did dances and spaghetti dinners every week for patients and staff on the Naval Hospital Corona. The Corona-Norco area was also very heavily involved in parades and various efforts to engender support for the hospital and to raise funds for bond drives. It jump-started the Corona-Norco's recovery from the Great Depression, housing was an important component of that. There was a unique relationship with Hollywood. Kay Francis, a Hollywood star at the time, established a naval aid auxiliary, which was specifically designed to have celebrities support naval hospitals. Her organization eventually spread nationwide, and it was significant in the fact that rather than just entertaining troops, which typical USO tours did, the stars actually interacted with the patients on the hospital, and you can see in the center picture, that's Gary Cooper playing pool with some of the naval hospital patients. They would even sit by the bedsides of soldiers who were going to be dying and console them during the last hours of their life. And there were extraordinary local efforts to keep the hospital open. The Navy closed the hospital in 1949, reopened it in 1951 for the Korean War, but then wanted to close it permanently, and people in the local community went above and beyond the call of duty to try to get the hospital to remain open. Here's a display which covers the, a proposal to keep the hospital open as a veterans' hospital. It was also the location of a revolutionary guided missile evaluation system that basically established evaluations, or made sure that the evaluations that were made of our guided missiles were acted upon responsibly, and as a result of this, this system, in 1964, our missiles began to work as they were supposed to, and the United States was able to establish its preeminence during the Cold War. So I hope you'll agree with the need to update our local listing. The cultural heritage, the Historic Preservation Commission unanimously recommended that the council approve the expansion of the Landmark Number One, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Does council have any questions? Kevin?
Bill, what would it take to include, since it would, for sequel, what would it take to include the bunkers and the fusing laboratories? That complex is almost entirely intact on the north side of the college up on the hill. Could we expand to include that? I think we've done enough information for the, that would come under the Naval Ordnance Laboratory Corona, NOLC.
Actually, the boundary that we've established does include that whole area.
Oh, okay, great.
So they're not named as resources, but they're within the boundary, and they're within the, in the National Register Historic District area.
Okay, great, thank you.
Miss Council, yes, Greg. Miss Council, yes, Greg.
Bill, I just wanted to thank you and the Historic Commission for your work and your report. Once again, just excellent work.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, we are going to go ahead and open up the public hearing at this time, then. We have two speaker cards. The first one is Sue Bacon.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Councilwoman. Here we are again. I don't need to repeat any of the true work and history of this property. But in this day where statues are being torn down and our history is being rewritten, we need to keep our history strong. We need to make sure that it doesn't get torn away. One of those ways is to have the historic overlay, to have the registry commit to this Linda Dixon and I, along with many members that are sitting here in front of me, we started the Historic Preservation Commission years ago. We were absolutely groundbreaking in getting our CLG status, creating our Historic Commission, and proceeding with historic overlays. This property is important. A year and a half ago, Bill Wilkman, Kevin Bash, and I went to Sacramento because the Navy was basically saying to SHPO, "This property has no historic relevancy." I know that's hard to believe, but they fought hard. And actually, the gentleman, Mr. Bailey, who signed these two letters regarding renovations on 515 and the cell towers, was the man who stood before SHPO stating, "There is no historic relevancy to this property." Thankfully, SHPO denied her argument. And that piece of paper has been sitting on the desk of Navy for over almost a year and a half, and all they need to do is review it. That's all they need to do. We have been very good neighbors with the Navy. One of the misconceptions about historic preservation is that if an overlay is put into effect, then it stops. It stops all work. That's not true. And I think our past history, the chauffeur's quarters, the garage, all part of the historic overlay presently, we've been working well with the Navy. We want to continue to work with the Navy. But this overlay does protect and allow that our communication is a part of the interaction. I am requesting that the city write a letter to the Navy, to Washington, D.C., that this review get off the desk and get passed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Linda Dixon.
She said it all, and I'm not going to expand on any of that, other than the fact that this is worthy, this is a future of our region. At a time when this was going to all go away many, many, many years ago, as Bill said, the local people and the local government put forth an extraordinary effort to save it, and it's time that we did that again. It's a shame, I've made many trips to Sacramento, along with some of you, and it's a shame that this has been sitting on the Navy's desk for a year and a half. It's inexcusable, the game-playing. I think it's time, and the city needs to stand up. And let's get it off the desk, let's get it taken care of once and for all. I do want to thank the Commission. We're finally hearing a voice from the Commission, and it's greatly appreciated. They're moving forward after so many years of more or less naught. And so, it's with heartfelt gratitude that they have brought this before you today, and I do encourage its passage. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no more speakers. Thank you. So I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, and I'll bring it back to council for discussion and action.
I could make just a couple of comments. There's actually a couple of things going on here. A year and a half ago, we went for the Commission, and I'm going to be candid, because quite honestly, I think they deserve it, given the two letters that we recently received. It was embarrassing. Bill, as many of you saw, Bill kind of took the Navy to task. Right now, we work very well with the Navy. They're rehabbing architecturally, historic architecture, some buildings, doing a great job. But that came at a price. The city, we've literally been fighting this battle since 1995, when they said the Norconian had lost all historic integrity and had no history. The city paid to have their own survey, and lo and behold, the Navy gave in. If the Navy were to come to us and say, "Hey, we know it's historic, we know this is magnificent, we totally get it, but for our mission, we need to do X, Y, Z." We have always said, "Can you put a plaque up?" I mean, can you, we totally get it. But I was stunned when we received a letter recently, and Ted and I and Greg, I mean, we've all worked on this. We go to quarterly meetings, we put on a Pearl Harbor Day, we put on all these events, we bring in some of the top historians in the nation on this subject. And we get a letter that says, "We've done an assessment, and this building," which is barely described, which is what we're going back to again, they come back and they say, "We've done an assessment, we've determined it doesn't touch any historic properties." And the building's made of wood. And you're going, "Wait a minute." Yeah, it's wood frame, but it's Phase I, it's a tiled, permanent building with all kinds of architectural tchotchkes all over it that matched the Norconian. It was essentially located, under, under the Section 106 Historic Preservation Code, you are required to make a good faith effort to describe a building. And to date, we've never had them do that, including the Norconian. They're also required to take in our comments. We have literally supplied them with thousands of photos, thousands of documents. The PowerPoint that Bill showed, those are photos literally from all over the United States, where we'd go for hours and cull through archives and say, "Whoa, look at this, oh, look at this." Most of what you saw there was completely forgotten seven years ago. And so, I take great offense at this point. We have played fair with them, but they need to understand, they have to stop sending letters out stating basically that Norco is wrong. We're not wrong. And what's really important is, I know I've heard this before, no offense to anybody who's ever said it, bureaucracies are hard to deal with, this is what they do. No, this is the United States Navy, and we expect them to behave in a certain way. What's really interesting about this letter, both of them, normally they're signed by captains. The captain overseeing this would be Captain Dawkey. I personally, you guys personally, we all did, Bill, we personally walked him through the history of that base. He knows the truth. He didn't sign this letter. Because the truth of the matter is, there's a code of conduct that if he signs that letter and this blows up in his face, he's in major trouble. And I really believe, that's why he didn't sign it. So my hope is, one, we support this move to put this on the National Register, or to expand our historic footprint there. And again, we're reasonable. Ted and I are sitting there going, "Wow, that's great, aw gee, we don't really like that." But you know, we get that you got to put that building there. And we seem to be working really well. Two, I think that we need to send a letter to the FIPPO, which Bill has all the information, say, "You know what? This is really, really not fair. We don't know what you're doing." The other thing, by the way, that I forgot, is I suspect what they're doing is they're going to try to get as many projects in as they can, because basically, our nomination is being held hostage, flatly. They obstructed us for 10 years, actually, 1970, two years after the Historic Preservation Code was passed, a historian came in and said, "Wow, this is very historic." He disappears, the facility manager said, "There's no photos, there's no history, there's nothing here." I mean, right out of the gate, that's what they were doing. So I think that we need to write FIPPO. And secondly, I think we need to take the Navy to task as a council, because we've spent a lot of money, not beat them up because they're trying to do their mission, we're not trying to do that, but say, "Wait a minute, guys, look. We have played fair with you. All we're asking is that you acknowledge what's occurred here, we're going to play fair with you, and then if you got to do something for your mission, we may discuss it, but we get that you're trying to keep going." What they want to do to this building, and this was a very significant building, they want to take off tile, they want to take off the front, and use the tile elsewhere. I totally disagree with that, but I totally get what they're trying to do. What makes me mad is the only description is, "It is a wooden building, wooden-framed building." Well, we have lots of times where they won't show the gym where the first wheelchair basketball game in history was shown, they'll show a theater, which had major people playing it, and they'll show the corner. The way they do their pictures, it's like, here you have a room, let's say this is, this is the White House, and they'll take a picture of that corner and say, "See, there's nothing there." That's how weird this thing gets. And we're right back to them doing the same thing. That was the Sustenance Building, centrally located, it had, it still does have plaster sides, and literally, if you look at a photograph of that building today, because they try to intimate that it's changed, it looks exactly like a photograph when it was constructed in 1943. Those are, those are actual criteria that are dictated, that they're required to look at. So even if they say, "Well, there's been no decision by FIPPO yet in Washington," it doesn't matter. You still have to do a good faith effort and follow, there's Bulletin 15 tells you exactly how to do what you're supposed to do. And we have, candidly, we have emails where they're doing everything they can privately, out of transparency, to get out of doing these rules. They are the United States Navy. And here's the last thing, I'll close with this. This base was founded in 1958, essentially, the current mission, because people, they were building fusing systems, and people were lying about the fusing systems. And during World War II, you had torpedoes that either fired too soon, too late, not at all, and we don't even know how many American crews were killed. 1958, the fusing people who were in charge of making the fuses were in charge, and the evaluators and assessment people were saying, "Hey, they don't work." And they said, "Well, just give us the reports, and we're going to fudge, and we'll make them work tomorrow." It became, finally, they raised such a ruckus, they were fired. And they went back, found an old submariner who came out here, and he said, "I'm going to form the first weapons assessment and evaluation group in the history of the military, right here in Norco." This base's motto is to reveal the truth. Truthfully, the United States Navy, reveal the truth. If they're lying about a building that is right in front of us, are they lying when they assess the weapons that are people in harm's way? In harm's way, are they lying about those? That's what's at stake here. We talk about our youth, if we don't stand up to this and say, "No, you're going to do it, you have to do it the way it's supposed to do, the way you're supposed to do it." What are we telling the kids that sit here and come into our class? So my hope is, is that this council will, and again, we're not trying to bust their chops. Right now, we have a great relationship with Captain Dawkey, Captain Brombeck, Captain Brombeck gave our Memorial Day. I tell you, one of the reasons we soft-pedaled at that meeting was Captain Brombeck was sitting there, and we kind of didn't want to embarrass him. But guess what? His own historians embarrassed him in front of that Commission. And they did embarrass the Navy. And so I hope that, one, we will approve this, two, I hope we'll send a letter to FIPPO, and three, it doesn't have to be a, I'm going to send the bust-your-chops letter. And Lncf, I think, will send a bust-your-chops letter, as will the Riverside Conservatory, Corona Heritage, Corona Historical Society. The people are mad. But I also hope we as a city will say, "Wait a minute, come on, guys. Even if it's just a phone call, say, 'Pull this letter back, work with us, we'll help you write it, and if you really have to do this for your mission, so be it.'" But let's stop the lying. And so that's all I have to say on the matter. Thank you, Madam Mayor, for giving me the time to say that.
Is there any other discussion from council? Berwin?
I just wanted to, excuse me, I just wanted to thank Bill for the work he's done, and always good to see those photos and everything, and I see no reason why we can't support that, but it's up to everybody.
Reminds you of when we were kids, doesn't it, Berwin?
What's that?
Reminds you of when we were kids.
That's right.
Thank you. You know, on the eve of the 75th day of D-Day, 75th anniversary of D-Day, it's, this is a World War II historical place. As a city, we have invested a lot of time, not to mention a lot of money, that came through. I know that there's also been private donations made. This is one of those things where, I've said it before, it's a return on our investment. We need to keep these investments going, and this is investment into not only our historical value, but that's our future. There's something going to happen there that's going to make, whether the Navy moves or the president closes, it is, it is something to keep in the back of your mind. So we have to maintain it. That was one of the reasons the Mission Inn, I know that they maintain that, look at it today. And Kevin, you talking about the Navy not telling you, look, I worked on a base that they will tell you that a facility that I used to drive by every day never existed. And to this day, it still doesn't exist, okay? It's got an NSA on it, but it never existed. So, and that was back in the '70s. That's enough, thank you.
Any other comments from council? I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution Number 2019-22, approving the nomination to report to expand City of Norco Landmark Number One. It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 2019-22.
Just a question, so the other two things, a letter to FIPPO and a letter to the Navy responding, can we authorize Bill just to do that? And the mayor maybe sign it, or how do we do that?
Do we need a separate motion for that, or? We'll do a, we'll do a separate motion. Councilmember Bash, do you have another motion?
Now I'll make a motion, and actually, kind of, I'm going to expand it. I want to write a letter to FIPPO, and I'd like to CC that to, in fact, actually, a letter to FIPPO, a letter to Congressman Calvert, asking for his help, Senator Feinstein, and then also a letter to the Navy, saying, you know what, politely, or however we want to say it, a letter to them stating, "Please, this is not acceptable, we can't support this," however Bill wants to say it, but that it will go out from the City of Norco, with the mayor and probably, and actually, all five council people, if that's possible.
Your second. Then properly moved and seconded to send a letter to FIPPO, Calvert, Feinstein, and the Navy, with signatures from all council members. Okay, we'll need to vote verbally. Councilmember Newton? Councilmember Hoffman? Councilmember Bash? Mayor Protem Hannah? Mayor Grunmeyer? Yes. Motion passes unanimous. Okay, thank you.
Mayor Andy and I decided that we're going to put the president's name on there, too.
Okay, moving on to Item B, which is a tentative parcel map 37741. It's a request to combine five existing parcels and subdivide the resulting 1.3 acres into two parcels on the northwest corner of Hamner Avenue and Alhambra in the C-O zone. Mr. King?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. It's exactly that. It's a parcel map, it's for the existing parking lot in front of the community center. It's bounded by Acacia Avenue on the west and Hamner Avenue on the east. It's a long, skinny parcel. It's going to continue to be a parking lot. The problem is, the existing lot configuration doesn't match the lot the way it's constrained by the streets. So the map will combine those lots into, well, into one, and then subdivide the one into two, with the two lots separated by Alhambra Street. The Planning Commission reviewed this and has recommended approval. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation and answer any questions.
Does Council have any questions for Mr. King? So then, does Council have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded to approve the tentative parcel map 37741.
Please vote.
No anticipation on this one?
No.
Except for Councilman Newton.
Councilmember, please vote.
Is that? Oh, shoot. Yes, you get me on that every time. City Clerk will pause real quick. Are there any cards on this matter?
There are no cards on this matter.
Thank goodness. Look at you paying attention. And I even wrote it down right here, too. So, open, close. Thank goodness, now we'll vote. Mr. Newton saved us.
Motion passes unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. We are going to move to City Council, City Manager Staff Communication. So we are going to go around, but we need to take care of who will emcee the summer concerts first, so that I can get that off my checklist. So we have June 7, which is this Friday, My Generations, June 21 with Yard Sale, July 19 with Redneck Rodeo, August 2 with Silverado's, and August 16 with Woody and the Longboards. So since Mr. Newton so kindly saved me from doing something incorrectly, you get first
Thank you, Mayor. Are any of these bands Journey bands? A Journey covered band?
Looking at the names, I would have to say no.
Because last year, the mayor sang with them. I know who needs Redneck Rodeo. I'll take Yard Sale, those guys are good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you again for making my correction. So then, Councilman, or Mayor Protem Hannah? Oh, he was inferring that you would do that one? Councilman Hoffman?
August 16.
Councilman Bash? All right, so, I have Friday. All right, so now we will move on to the rest of item number seven. So we're going to start with Matt. Anything? All right. Chad?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just real quick clarification on the, just so the item's not lingering as far as information. Regarding its newest completion for the Corona and Valuable Stations, I did, was able to go into my information and determine that the error was a $30,000 error in the final cost, it should have been $30,000 higher, it just was wrong in the staff report, but we'll bring it back at the appropriate time with the correct information.
Okay, thank you. Mr. King? Mr. Petrie? Dana? You're tired from today, huh? It's been a long day.
Tired? Yes. But I do want to welcome Dana, and also officially say, she's not listening, thank you to Cheryl for all of her assistance and making me look so good so many times, and just looking forward to seeing her in the future.
Chief? Lieutenant? Mayor Protem?
I'd also like to say thanks to Cheryl and everything, we've enjoyed having you here and working with you and everything, and good luck in the future.
Ted, do you have any? I'm going to give the meeting to you to close, but do you have anything?
Yeah.
No? Okay. Andy? John? Kevin?
A couple of things. We're not allowed to say anything nice about Cheryl, things like how wonderful she's been, and what a great city clerk, and how much we're going to miss her, and since I'm not allowed to say those things and sing her praises, I won't do that. One of the things that I'll bring up next meeting, I have an idea that I'd like to link the FFA to some large-lot ideas, but I was able to find a few Coronians, but I was able to find one person, James Newsom, who was at D-Day, he lived in the White House off Hamner Avenue, the Newsom House, and he was a sailor who landed the landing craft at D-Day, and that's the only one that I can find who was from Norco, and I'll leave it at that.
Councilman Newton?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess, this is kind of a request, Andy, and, but it, I think, involves almost all of your senior staff, that in some way, shape, or form, if you could have a field trip, starting at Sixth and Hamner, okay, and just go down Sixth Street and look at the Wheat Abatement, we need to contact Caltrans, that Sixth Street and 15 Freeway is just covered in trash, graffiti, panhandlers back again. And as you just keep going down Sixth Street, it's looking pretty rough the whole way. And I think this is something that, it's slipped out of our grasp a little bit, and I think we need to get a handle back on it. I think a little field trip would be in order. And then the other thing is, I'm not saying goodbye to you at all. Said it all.
All right, Cheryl?
Just a reminder that recruitment is still open for the various city commissions and advisory councils. So we have the Streets, Trails, Utilities Commission, Parks and Recreation Commission, Planning Commission, who did I miss? Economic Development Advisory Council, if I said them already. But, no, we have various commissions, several openings, vacancies, we have 11 total. That recruitment ends on Monday, June 10, at 6:00 P.M. So I encourage residents that are interested to get information on the city's website or come to the city clerk's office. We're happy to provide them with an application. And then I just wanted to just finally thank the residents of Norco for allowing me to serve them for the past five years, actually, 12 in total. It's been an absolute pleasure. This has been my home away from home, and it's, I've met some just phenomenal people in this community. Norco has grit, and it has passion, and that's why I love working here. And it's just been an exciting ride, and I want to thank Andy for the opportunity to be part of this talented team. And finally, the City Council, you have made my job easier. It was, I mean, it doesn't get any more real than this, and that's what I love about this job, and having the relationships that we've had. So thank you so much.
Right, thank you, Cheryl. So for this evening, I'm going to go ahead and let Councilman Hoffman close the meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow, June 6, 75 years ago, 1944, the invasion of Normandy. And let me read to you from General Dwight D. Eisenhower, Supreme Allied Commander. This is to the 156,000-plus troops from the United States, United Kingdom, Canada, France, Norway, and other allied nations. They stormed five beaches, 6,000 ships and landing crafts, 50,000 vehicles, 11,000 planes, over 12,000 men died that day. 326,000 allied troops crossed by June 11, along with 100,000 tons of military equipment. As of last year, there were 496,777 veterans from World War II that were still living, and that number decreases. But this is what General Dwight D. Eisenhower told those men. "You're about to embark upon the great crusade towards which we have striven these many months. The eyes of the world are upon you. The hopes and prayers of liberty-loving people everywhere march with you. Your task will not be an easy one. Your enemy is well-trained, well-equipped, and battle-hardened. He will fight savagely. But this is the year, 1944. The tide has turned. The free men of the world are marching together in victory. I have full confidence in your courage, devotion to duty, and skill in battle. We will accept nothing less than full victory. Good luck, and let us all be seized to the blessing of Almighty God upon this great and noble undertaking." From General Dwight D. Eisenhower. With that, I'd like to close this meeting in remembrance of those men and women on D-Day 75 years ago.
This meeting is adjourned.